There was an error there. It's for seventy thousand, three twenty-nine, so we need to modify that.
Motion to approve is amended.
Or?
Motion with support to approve consent agenda items one through ten, which are the minutes from the regular council meeting on December eighteenth, approved payment emergency apparatus maintenance, approved payment machine shed for law enforcement academy meals, approved payment of machine shed for law enforcement academy meals from Campbell and McLeeland, approved payment to Center State International Trucks, approved payment to Schluter's Auto Service, approved tuition reimbursement for Newberry, approved tuition reimbursement for Moore, approved clerk's monthly financial report for number twenty nineteen, and approved a claims list as presented in the amount one-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars and forty-three cents. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ait Myer?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
We'll show Carrie. Staff reports. Dan?
Got a couple things. Got a big stack of invitations for the Chambers Annual Dinner on January thirty-first. So we have twelve spots, so let me know if you want to attend. And then, also related to, well, not just our chamber, but on February twelfth and thirteenth in Des Moines, Southeast Iowa days, kind of the lobbying trip for Burlington area, Lee County, Henry County, we kind of do a Southeast Iowa regional lobbying trip to Des Moines, so it's one overnight stay. So let me know if you want to go to that as well.
Do I have anything for Dan? Mike?
Yeah, I got a couple things. The light, West Burlington light on GE's land there, that's up and running now for the sign. We had waiting on warranty parts, so our sign's lit back up over there. And then they hit on the traffic lights out at Agency and Gear. Hearing a lot of things on social media and stuff about that, but the control box came in, it's mounted, and we got the red flashing lights going. The light pole that was not cleared down is in transit to them now, so they'll be putting that up. The pods to cycle the lights are another two weeks out before they get them in hand, before they have to go drill, put them in, epoxy them in the street. And then the programmers will be here to program the whole intersection, so we can have the traffic lights completely done. Not that they're not working on it, just part of the parts are here, so part of it's in and installed, and they're still waiting on the rest of it to get here.
So our welcome light by AVB, was it never?
No, it was on, it failed, something broke, it was under warranty, so they got it covered parts under warranty, and just got it in from three E, and Mike called me yesterday or day before and said it was up and running now, so.
Do I have anything for Mike? Jesse?
A couple things. I got new hires, McLeeland and McCambell went to, started Academy last Thursday, so this is their first full week up there. Haven't heard anything from them, so I'm assuming everything's going good, so. And then next Monday or Tuesday, I'll be in Davenport. I got federal court up there in reference to assistance that I assisted the Burlington Police Department and the Sheriff's Department on a drug bust that they did back in October. So I was involved with that, so I got to go up there on Monday or Tuesday, I'll find out tomorrow. Probably testify for five minutes and come back home, so. That's all I've got.
Do I have anything for Jess? Sean?
Well, I took vacation right after the last council meeting, came back after the first of the year, so I really didn't have a lot going on. I do have a couple inspections coming up this week on some new businesses that have opened up here in town, one out by the truck stop, and then vape shop over at Derrick Lincoln that I'll be dealing with, and have a couple nuisances that I noticed while I was on vacation, and I talked to Dan about them and updated him on some of them, and Jesse and I were working on one before I had left on vacation.
Do I have anything for Sean?
I did forget one thing that I was going to mention. I was offering to take any of the council members, the new or old or whatever, to the sewer plant. The project's not closed out, we've still got to get sludge out, but the new plant's up and running, and I didn't know if anybody would be interested in going down, seeing the operations of it, how it all works in the whole system. If you want to-
The goons are empty, aren't they?
No.
Are they turning over?
They're smelling pretty bad right now.
Yeah.
They could be.
Notice that.
Yeah.
Walking in the hospital.
They're down, they're down low, and we're, we got to keep them low because of infiltration. Last year, you know, we just about overflowed them. We had to get pumps in to bypass, so, and they're down waiting on, they're supposed to be here to haul sludge out, so the water's got to be out of them to be able to pull the sludge out and clean them out, but if anybody's interested, get with me and we'll set up a time and take people down to there. And I don't know if any of you've ever been to the booster station too over there by Rexplex where we got our water hooked up, and we can go by the water plant too and show you what kind of shape that's in while we're building a new tower and a new pump house out by the shop, and anybody who wants to go look at any of that stuff, just get with me and we'll, we can go take a look at it.
Maybe one of these two nights after the meeting, we could take a tour.
I was going to have Rod make sure he was there to go over the functions and how everything works at that sewer plant, so.
Probably want it to be light too.
Huh?
Probably want it to be light out, too.
Yeah, it'd be a lot easier to see when it's daylight, so I don't know how, I know what people's jobs and when they work, or give me some kind of timeframe. I mean, we could stay late if somebody's getting off at three-thirty or four or something when it's still light. Be a lot easier to see it.
If you want to tour, just have them get ahold of you.
Yep.
Okay. Callie, you got anything?
Last night.
Leslie? Okay. Seems both of you are new, I'll ask you. Anyway, Kathy, you got anything going on?
I do. First of all, I'd just like to thank all the city staff and everybody, all the heads of the departments. I've been up here talking to everybody to get me kind of a lot of background to get started, and I appreciate it, and thank you. I have a second thing. I recently started on the Southeast Iowa Planning Commission, Regional Planning Commission, the Steering Committee for the Bike and Walking Paths. And we had a meeting Monday night, and we had, we were talking about the bike lanes that run alongside of the regular traffic lanes, our Mount Pleasant Street. And one of the committee members said, well, the problem with those are they end up getting dirty, and they're hard to ride on with a bike, and so on and so on. But the planning director said, no, Burlington and West Burlington keep those really clean, and they're really good to ride a bike on. So I just wanted to pass that on. It's great to hear a comment like that. I want to thank Mike and Brad Muller, who usually does the sweeping, because we got a nice comment out in the community for keeping our bike trail, our bike lane clean, so.
I do. Pass that on to Brad.
Will do.
He likes running that sweeper. Andy, you got anything?
I just wanted to pass on one compliment. Came in and worked with Leslie a little bit on some budget items, and just after working at the school the last four or five years and having five different managers there on budget and finance, this is quite a change that she was able to pull every number I needed in a few seconds, so just really appreciate that. And it looks like the software and the staff here are great, so thank you.
Boys?
Nothing.
Reese?
I don't have anything.
Al? Good. All righty. I guess the next thing is an annual report from Southeast Iowa Regional Airport. And Mary Beard's here, she's the Airport Director, and Dan Wienermeyer is the representative, and Mitch Fletcher is our representative on the board.
Oh, well, let's see if I can, oh, I got it. Okay. Well, thanks for having me tonight. So annually, I do come in to all three entities that we, that support the airport and just give them the annual report, so that is, that's my intent here tonight. But just want to give you a little bit of a background, that the Airport Authority was formed in nineteen-ninety-six for the benefit of the people of the member municipalities and for the increase of commerce and prosperity, for the improvement of their welfare, health, and living conditions. So that is right from our Iowa code, is why we form Airport Authorities in the state of Iowa. This partnership between the Airport Authority and our entities allows us to fulfill our federal obligations and to maintain and operate the facility in a safe and efficient manner. So then it also allows us to be fiscally responsible to our entities that support us as well as the federal and state governments. Our airport provides for personal and business transportation, it's, and connectivity to the National Air Transportation System for all of our residents. It's an economic generator, and it's a tool to help retain and attract business to the community. According to the U.S. Department of Commerce, the multiplier effect on jobs and income is for every one dollar spent on aviation, approximately-
Two dollars and fifty cents is added to our local economy. I thought that was a pretty interesting statistic. We don't have the most current data, annual economic activity data. The state of Iowa is doing an update right now for all of the airports, but the one we do have is that for Burlington, the estimated annual activity, economic activity is at ten million dollars. I'm anxious to see what that new report comes out and says here at the end of the year. And the one thing that I like to say about airports is a mile of highway takes you a mile, but a mile of runway takes you anywhere, which is really true. Speaking of runways, we'll have a big runway rehabilitation project coming up this summer, so I'll get into that a little bit more as far as the budget side of things. If you look at aviation destinations, of course Burlington, West Burlington's right there in the center, those are all aircraft that have come and gone from Burlington in the last three years. So there's a lot of people outside of our community that are using our airport. The picture at the bottom, the aircraft off to the right is actually a cargo airplane that was bringing in some cargo for one of our local manufacturers. The one on the left there was for a bank. Recently, we've had many political candidates come through the airport. Aviation services that are provided by Jet Air include charter services, flight training, fuel sales, aircraft sales, air medical, and air ambulance, air maintenance, aircraft maintenance, overnight freight for critical air manufacturing parts and military aircraft. They have been at the airport, Jet Air Incorporated now, for about twelve years, so they take care of everything that is general aviation related. Then we have the commercial operation side of everything, and that's done by Air Choice One. Air Choice One is part of our airport because they belong to the Essential Air Service Program, so it's a federal program that provides air service for our community. They subsidize to the tune of about two-point-one million dollars a year for us to have Air Choice One. Currently, there is, there's been no change to the eligibility of that, so we believe that they will be here until 2023, is how long their contract is here. Two thousand dollar per passenger subsidy cap, so for every, sometimes you'll hear when we talk about essential air service, that there are airports that have one thousand dollar subsidy cap. So we are at one-seventy-six, so that's a good, a good target for us to have, as long as we're below that two hundred dollars, then we're at no risk of losing that service for our community. Couple things that we see happening in the aviation world, we want to talk about the Moline, Peoria, Cedar Rapids. What will be happening for those communities is the aircraft size will increase, frequency then decreases. So they will not be served to the level that they currently are, that's probably in the five, next five-year plan. And so we're fortunate that Air Choice One is a nine-passenger, it's a great fit for us, and they should, would not be affected by this larger aircraft scenario. Commercial operations provide for thirty-three percent of our operating revenues, for the airport, operating revenues, that is. So as long as Air Choice One stays, then that helps us be able to pay for all of our operating costs at the airport. Let's see, so currently, Air Choice One provides daily flights to Chicago, St. Louis, and Minneapolis, all, five days a week to Minneapolis. That's really, that's really awesome for a community our size to have that type of service. Most communities with the essential air service have one hub that they go to. So in the state of Iowa, there are five commercial airports that are essential air service, and of those, we are the only one that has the three, the three hubs that we go to, so. Let's see what else is going on with Air Choice One. They've added, or beginning to add Beechcraft nineteen-hundred, so if you recall in the day when Great Lakes was here, it was the Beechcraft, it served nineteen passengers, American Airlines had nineteen-passenger aircraft. Air Choice One is adding those to their fleet. Burlington is not targeted for that at this point in time. It is really good for a longer route than what we have to our hub airport, so. On-site folks that we have at the airport that we really don't always talk about, of course, we have TSA that's out there, they employ probably twelve to fifteen folks. We have an FAA field technician that's here full-time. We have Civil Air Patrol, that's a, that's a group of teenage kids that come in and they do, they're through the Air Force, so they get a lot of training with airports, aircraft. Experimental Aircraft Association, so that's another group of general aviation pilots who all gather and talk about their hobbies and their aircraft, and so those are mainly the guys who help us when we put on events at the airport, and then they also rent most of our hangars. And then, of course, we have Avis Car Rental that's at the airport, so. In 2019, we had fifteen thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty-six commercial service passengers, so that's how many folks flew on Air Choice One. It's actually a little bit of a decrease over last year, and a lot of that, we can contribute that to our last January when the weather was so cold and icy, we had about a week where we were unable to fly because of the ice on the runways. And then we had an ASOS, our weather service went down for about a week, so that causes some grief as well. But the good news is, we did have eight thousand employments that boarded last in 2019, which means, and 2018, which means that the airport can receive six hundred thousand dollars in federal funds for infrastructure needs. So we'll be seeing that money flow in in probably 2021. So that's pretty exciting, that was a big goal of ours to reach that, eight thousand. If you're below eight thousand, your income, what you would receive is a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, and then if you hit that ten thousand employment mark, you receive a million dollars in federal funds. So we're right in the middle, and this six hundred thousand dollars is going to be really, really helpful for what we're trying to do. General Aviation Monthly Operations, so it looks like, boy, that's a hard story, we had one thousand six hundred and fifty-four operations, three thousand three hundred and thirty-five operations for commercial aviation, so that's almost five thousand operations at the airport last year, three hundred and sixty-five days. And we did see a little bit of a decrease again, I think we can relate that to those two and a half weeks of winter weather last year that we had some issues. So in 2019, what happened at the airport as far as state projects, we did air service, we have an air service development program that is funded through the Iowa Office of Aviation to about sixty thousand dollars. Our match for that is twenty percent, and that is to advertise commercial air service. So they provide those funds to us annually, and when you see our marketing, maybe our Facebook page or our website, hear it on the radio about Air Choice One, all of that is done through this grant, that's why we're able to market Air Choice One. And then we had terminal improvements to about three hundred and ten thousand dollars this year. We're doing a kind of a facelift on the outside, new windows, new siding. And then 2020, the projects that we do have slated for the state of Iowa, that sixty thousand dollars comes annually for marketing money, and then we will be doing some pavement improvements around the hangar area, and that's about a hundred and thirty thousand dollar project with a sixteen percent match from our community. The big project we have is the Federal Aviation Administration-funded project, which is to reconstruct our main runway eighteen thirty-six. It's a little over twelve million dollars, and that's supposed to start in March or as soon as the weather breaks, so. Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, it's a pretty good investment in our community at twelve-point-seven million dollars with the minimal match from, from the entities and from the airport. In February sixth, I just want to let you know, February sixth, there's a community informational meeting about our runway eighteen thirty-six project at the public library, so you all will be invited to hear about that, as we have, we'll have the engineers in town to try and talk about the project, how it's going to be phased, and what's going to be affected at what point in time. So that, I always like to review our operating budget here. And, and it always looks like this, it's always a red number, that income number's always a little bit red, so it's about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in the red. So when I present this budget, it's really the operating side of things. With the contributions from the city Burlington, West Burlington, Des Moines County, we're able to use some of those funds to cover our operating, some of our operating costs, it's about seventy-three percent, and then the remaining money is fifty-eight, will be about fifty-eight thousand dollars. That actually goes for any capital improvement needs we have, or some of these match dollars when we're doing federal or state programs, projects. So that's with that extra money, we kind of bank that until, until we can afford to do some of those programs. So this is kind of the big one, this is the future, this is our project, runway eighteen thirty-six. We've been talking about this with our entities for about five years now. Somebody know how to increase the size of that, so you guys can see those numbers?
I think you're right next to, you move your mouse over just above there.
To the mouse, maybe? Okay, there we go. Thanks, Brad. Sorry to bother you.
No problem.
So I laid this out, I'm not sure how the entities all budgeted for this, but in 2016, when we first started talking about it, that's the first box of numbers, and what we came to you and asked for was about eighty-two thousand, two hundred dollars. And then in 2018, when we actually started looking at the cost of that and putting some hard numbers to it, we raised that amount to about ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and two dollars in June of 2019, when that bid came in at twelve-point-one million dollars. There's the increase by entity, so at this point in time, I guess we're asking that that, that contribution be raised up to a hundred and seven thousand dollars. As we start talking, again, in 2015, sixteen about that, we're at eighty-two thousand dollars, so not sure how you all budgeted, or if that would be available to us or not, but that's what we would like to ask for as far as a contribution. You can see that Burlington's picking up seventy-five percent of our ten percent match, Des Moines County's at thirteen percent, and then the airport has been able to save up some of those funds to get to that three hundred and twenty-seven thousand that will contribute to it.
What, what's the, we, we budgeted that's-
We were up in the ninety-eight, one oh two, and we, and you guys improved that we had smaller budget that we're working on.
So that'd be an additional eighty, eighty-nine, fifty-seven? Above the fifteen?
Yeah. Above the ninety-eight, one oh two.
Right.
Yeah.
We built that in, that we, because we called you, we built that in.
Yeah.
It's in this year's budget.
Hundred and fifty-nine dollars short. Building for the budget next year. Very good.
Okay, thank you. So that, that will be a very big project that will happen all summer long, starting in March, anticipated to be done by October. We should not impact any of our commercial air service operations or any of our normal general aviation operations. We will be redoing some lighting and painting on the south end of that main runway, so we can utilize that until we do the intersection part. So we are hoping for a smooth, smooth ride through the summer with this project. And then as we look out into the future here, the capital improvements that we have planned for twenty-one through twenty-six, various of the marketing program, that will be done every year, and then we will be doing this rehabilitate our next taxiway, Charlie, one-point-five million dollars, so that will be that six hundred thousand dollars that we received from the employments. So we should be able to fund most of those projects. At this point in time, I don't anticipate us needing any additional help, but certainly know that if we have a million-dollar project with a ten percent match, that we may need some assistance with that, so. Once we rehabilitate our taxiway, Charlie, and our taxiway D, most of our payment, big money, ticket dollars, most of those projects will be done for us.
So I'll wait through twenty-four, twenty-five, you don't anticipate this point?
We are not anticipating, no.
No.
And, then there's our, our board members there from the city of Burlington, is Charlie Walsh, John Schultz, and Elizabeth Van Black-Sully. Dan Wienermeyer's from Des Moines County, and Mick, so I want to thank Mick for being at our meetings annually, helping us out and providing your voice for, for the Airport Authority. Is there anything else? Anything to add?
The airport won't be closed except for half an hour.
That's, that's the hope.
That's the hope.
That's the hope.
So when the runway gets rebuilt, or that's total construction, so we'll just have one runway now?
Nope, no, we'll still have, both runways will be available.
So how do you do that?
So they will close the intersection, so they will displace the threshold, so on eighteen thirty-six, it will be all the way to the south. The runway length will be dropped down to forty-three hundred feet.
So then that will, that will be able to maintain the system here, man, it really doesn't take that much space to land and take off, and, and then even the Gulfstream five hundreds can land on that, so our larger aircraft can land on that as well.
What about width-wise?
So, yep, they are reducing it to a hundred feet from a hundred and fifty feet, so that'll be a reduction. Certainly, we could keep a hundred and fifty feet if we wanted to pay that difference, but chose not to do that. So they look at, they actually, FAA looks at aviation forecasts and, and your history, and the type of aircraft that are using your airport, and then they determine the needs.
Could you send us a copy of this report?
Absolutely, I could do that, I could give you a hard copy if you-
Email me, great.
Okay, fantastic.
Any questions? Rick?
Before I retire your opening, I have something to mention to Dan at work, is that the plane that goes to Minneapolis and St. Paul, and I know you stopped at Mason City?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Is there any opportunity in the future to go to Rochester? Because I've had a few people ask me about Rochester, going to the hospital, but there is some other people, even my daughter who lives in Rochester, that I could fly up there, or that, but I've had a few people ask me about, why can't you just swing over, stop in Rochester before you go up there?
Sure, we had that discussion when we were talking about Minneapolis. So for Air Choice One, the Burlington to Mason City is, is not a subsidized route, so it works into the way their planes are put into their locations. So that's why we, we were fortunate to get to Mason City and Minneapolis. Rochester, it's on the radar, we talked about it, but I just, just don't see it being in Air Choice One's roadmap at this point in time. Now, I know that you can get a bus that goes directly from Minneapolis to Rochester. Because we looked at that, actually.
The old, the old thing you used to go from Bronton to Galesburg to something to St. Louis, or even Quincy, I can get an airport back.
We did go to Quincy.
And you bounced around there, so I just thought, when Dan Ross said you're talking, he said you could go to Mason City, Rochester, and then you might go to St. Paul.
We do offer flight training, that'd be important, in case you'd be interested in that.
Dan can, Dan can help.
I'll fly it. For a few.
Be cyberplane.
Parachutes included? Parachutes included?
You're welcome.
Well, thank you for coming out.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you too. Thanks, Mick, for wanting to serve this. All righty. Anyone wishing to address council matters that are not on the agenda tonight? Go to new business. And number one is consider resolution appointing Kelly Frye as the city clerk.
So move. Support.
Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Please.
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Crowder?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number two is consider resolution appointing Katie Williford as the deputy city clerk.
So move. Support.
Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Crowder?
Aye.
Aitmeyer?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number three is consider resolution naming Des Moines County News and the Hawkeye as the city's official newspapers.
So move. Support.
Motion with support, any discussion?
I would just like to thank Lori Cochran for faithfully attending our meetings for the Des Moines County News.
They seem to do, she seems to do a lot better job than what we get from the Hawkeye.
I haven't seen a Hawkeye person here.
I think the only reason we still use the Hawkeye is to get in.
Just in case we need a quick one, turnaround sometime. Otherwise, we don't.
All righty, roll call.
Crowder?
Aye.
Aitmeyer?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number five is consider payment to Snyder Associates for engineering services related to the following projects. The facility plan lift station replacement, amount of $5,460. Oh, I'm sorry, we'll go, item number, item number, I already scratched it off, we'll go back. Item number four, consider resolution approving preliminary plat for the eighth addition to the Wildlife Lake subdivision.
So move. Support.
Motion with support. And what does Mr. Bowen want to do out there?
Just adding a few more lots to his subdivision.
Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Aitmeyer?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Crowder?
Aye.
Motion carried. Now, item number five is consider payment to Snyder Associates for engineering services related to following projects. Facility plan lift station replacement, $5,460. Water tower booster station improvements, $9,285. And Des Moines County landfill lift station improvement, $2,730.
So move. Support.
There's a motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Please?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Crowder?
Aye.
Aitmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number six is consider purchase of 12 Neptune water meters from Ferguson Waterworks for an amount of $3,000.
So move.
Support.
Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Crowder?
Aye.
Aitmeyer?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number seven is consider public hearing date of February 5th, 2020 at 6:00 PM to, for a maximum levy. What this is, the state is making us have two public hearings now. One to, to say what the, if the levy could stay the same or not. It's a formality we have to go through now. So this would be the first public hearing for that.
So moved.
Support.
Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Christie?
Aye.
Crowder?
Aye.
Aitmeyer?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number eight is consider renewal of three right-of-way permits for Deanville Telecom for three years.
So moved. Support.
Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Crowder?
Aye.
Aitmeyer?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number nine is to discuss and approve the goal-setting executive summary report. Everybody had a chance to look at it. Any comments? Everything in there that we discussed? Other than we have a new city administrator mentioned in there? Type O? Any comments anybody want to make on it?
Those goals look like what we talked about.
They look fine.
Page six, it refers to a different city, too.
Make a motion to approve the summer report.
Support.
Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Aitmeyer?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Crowder?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number 10 is consider a city calendar schedule for 2020. It's kind of laid out with the, you know, different council meetings and what the holiday schedule is for city hall, what we have on budget work sessions planned, and league of city conferences are on there, and municipal leadership academies, the Fourth of July celebration, and trick-or-treat night. They're all different color-coded, but kind of gives you an idea of, you know, what you can plan for, for the, for the rest of this year. Of course, it's all flexible and can be changed, you know, other than probably the Fourth of July celebration, you know, set in stone.
Well, I'm just wondering if we go back to having council meetings on Monday night? I know we moved it for Rick, but since one of the Rs isn't up here, I just know that I'm still working, and I'm always off on Mondays, but it seems like if we add something on a Tuesday, I won't catch it until I get here. And we have the weekend to review it. I don't know, I don't know what anybody else's schedule's like.
I can meet on Monday if we want to.
Do you meet every Monday? Because I know you had, at one point, you told me you had a problem with some Mondays.
Well, that's changed.
Oh, okay, good.
Well, no.
Because, because January and February, we pretty much meet every week.
Oh, okay. Well, what I was going to say was because I'm only busy on the second Monday, but it's January and February, I can skip that, those months.
Because I, I mean, it's totally up to council to set that schedule.
I'm available either night. Just to mention it, obviously, our school meetings are on Mondays, so people that are interested in both can't make both, our reporter can't make both, but I can personally do either.
Just nights we hold our fire meetings too, on Mondays.
Oh, okay. Wednesdays it is. Okay. Roll it out there. Roll it out there.
Doesn't hurt to ask.
All righty. I don't think you need to take any formal action on this thing, it's just informational for you.
I think the only other I might point out, the next meeting, we talked about changing to the 22nd, our regular meeting, just so we don't have to turn right around and do claims next week, kind of give us a week in between for this month.
We'll still meet and have a budget work session next week, but that's all we'll do.
Call our regular meeting the 22nd, and then the other meeting, normal change would have been September, we would have met on the 16th, and changing that to the 23rd in case anybody was going to, wanted to go to the league conference.
Well, anytime there's three or more of them here, it's a meeting anyway, so.
Yeah.
Well, but we would consider the regular meeting.
I mean, you just don't have to worry about the next week. Instead of having the claims next week, we'll have them the following week. Anybody have any old business? Anybody want to address council matters we did discuss tonight? Or didn't? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Support. Motion with support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meetings adjourned. Thank you. We will be having a work.